Okay, welcome back, everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. We are out of our second executive at 2:36. We have some action to be taken. So at this time, as a reminder to folks online, we had this as an action item during our nine o'clock session this morning to sign a criminal defense provider agreement with two attorneys, Robert Chastain and Alyssa Massaw. So at this time, I will make the motion that we sign those agreements between those two.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Will we all sign this?
Yes.
Arnie, how's it going, man? I've seen you all day. Where you been?
Doing contracts.
Nice. Keeps you out of trouble, doesn't it?
Just to include in the meeting minutes, I'd like to have them.
Thank you, ma'am. You want us down there?
Oh, I don't.
You don't care?
If you guys are comfortable.
Comfortable in my...
That is kind of my nap time.
My sweats.
Me now.
My feet kicked up out on the couch.
You don't get to come to work that way, you know? We harassed you enough just on the floor.
Okay, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a work session for property tax training put on by our assessor, Sue Leeper. So, Sue, I will turn it over to you.
Wouldn't you see you?
Somebody looks just like her in this building.
Smile, sweetheart, smile.
It could be worse. You could have to be in this room every day.
So, the whole purpose for today's workshop is to... It's been a while since you guys have had to go over these exempt applications. As you know, we kind of got into a bottleneck last year, so we're trying to start this much sooner and encourage people to apply now.
So, this is all tax exempt, not just churches?
Correct.
All tax exempt?
So, what we did is we made you a packet. So, I already gave you a copy of the letter that we sent out, letting people know they could go apply online if they wanted to and/or print the application off, send it in mail, however they feel comfortable applying for.
How long do we have until we apply for one? How long? What's the deadline to apply for one?
April 15th. So, anything... I mean, they have to submit an application by April 15th for Idaho code or...
That has nothing to do with the 292 that they just did.
But we're going to also be doing this probably, probably in the future for nonprofit hospitals as well. That's the legislation that Rod Beck has pushed forward. And it's just going to be a whole bunch more work, but I don't think we're going to gain much out of it.
Well...
Other than we'll know.
Yeah, we'll see where it ends up.
Yeah.
But as it stands at this given moment, even if they did pass something, it probably would not be effective until next year anyway.
It'll be effective by July 1.
Right, which will affect next year's process rather than this year. So, at the moment, we just have to go with what we have. So, with the first page...
While you're talking about timing, the deadline for applications is April 15th. The deadline for approvals is May 15th. So, it is a 30-day turnaround from board. So, lots, lots of work coming your way in that 30-day window. You got a little bit more time once you get to the BOE, but the county commissioners makes the first decision. Board of Equalization considers the appeals.
We've done that in the past. Well, last year.
We did that last year.
That was the BOE. That was the Board of Equalization.
No, it's convened as the BOE. So, you're probably, probably what you're remembering is the BOE hearings where the applicant actually comes in and presents to the BOE. Your first, your first round is just the county commissioners convening as the board to consider the written application.
Last year, we did all of this one. Did one year.
Normally, she comes in with a list.
Yeah, we had a list last year.
A list and we just approved the list.
We went through. It was just us.
So, last year, I think it was towards the end of April, we brought in the list. We brought in all the applications. We had made copies for you guys, and you guys are the ones who are responsible for approving or denying each.
That's when we have the discussion with each church camp. Hey, this is what's coming. It's a business decision whether or not you want to continue commercially using your church.
So, you're responsible for getting a letter of approval or a letter of denial out to them. Whatever you guys have decided, we send them a letter. Either they're approved or they're denied. Then they have the opportunity to appeal your decision, and they have to file that appeal by the 4th Monday in June. And you guys have to make a final decision.
By 5th?
No later than the... What is it? The 2nd Monday in July is when BOE has to be adjourned. So, we have basically the 4th Monday in June until the 1st... Or, excuse me, 2nd Monday in July to make you guys can make those decisions. That's the deadline. The deadline's per Idaho code.
Don't take vacation, then. That's what I just heard you say.
Anyway, so, the purpose of this workshop today is for... Just to refresh you guys, we have changed our applications to be more pointed questions, mostly right out of Idaho code for each code section that they may be applying for. So, today, Christie made a copy of the main two-page application. And then, so, if they're applying under 602B, we provided Idaho code for you. And then, we also provided the 602B worksheet that they need to go in and answer these questions that pertain to them. They can submit online. They can submit in person or through the mail. As those applications come in through the prosecutor's office, we are logging them in. We are reviewing them. Any red flags that we see, we are putting in an email and forwarding the whole application to the prosecutor's office for review. The prosecutor is going to review them, and then, I believe, they're going to give their recommendation back to the assessor's office. And as those come through, I will ask to be put on the agenda and send them to you as well, so you can review them. And then, you guys either approve or deny or portion whatever your decision is. And then, whatever your decision is, we are responsible for getting letters out to each organization, letting them know what your decision was. And then, at that point, if they want to file an appeal on your decision, they have until the 4th Monday to do that.
So, this is your, in your purview, to basically make ruling on all this before you send it to us of what you feel like should be doing?
So, our office and the prosecutor's office is going to go through the application, see if, A, if it's complete. And if it is complete, then they will do their recommendation on the information that was submitted. And then, at that point, I'll ask to be put on the agenda so you guys can hear those applications and approve or deny. So, we're going to be doing this quite a bit over the next... But we're hoping that they're going to trickle in, and so, it's manageable this year, whereas last year, we were pretty rushed to meet the deadlines and pretty hard to be thorough and effective.
We've also got them online now. I don't know if you knew that or not.
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, I saw that. I think that's really great. So, we've got basically five different codes here. Do we have any housing owned by a nonprofit? Would that be like the YCAB building in McGaw?
We have one, and it is...
And that's it?
Isn't it? Yeah.
Okay, so, we do have one of those.
We also have the housing trust, but I'm questioning how many of those actually qualify because of one sentence in here. I think the ones down in Adams County will, but I don't know if the ones in Valley County.
Well, at least you have the, at least you have the question now and the code that you can review.
Yes. It's whether within the rental agreements, if they can be... If they are to be kicked out of the rental, they have to be given like 90 days instead of 30 or something like that. So, it's specific to the time that you actually kick them out. And then, also, the units have to be within, I think it's 30% of the rental agreements, and there's three units in Adams County but not Valley County, which is really kind of tragic because we're trying to put housing on the ground. You know, you'd think that that wouldn't be quite as restrictive, but obviously, I let sliders have.
So, the springs, they're not considered as low-income housing?
They can't, any of theirs.
They are for, what, Section 42 or...
They don't get... I don't think they get a tax break, do they? Yeah, I think so.
Not, not county.
I don't think they go to the county level.
Yeah, Catherine Almberg told me they weren't qualified. That's why I started looking into it. She said that was like...
That'd be a pretty good change.
So, you have the applications and the questions, so you know what is being asked. As you'll notice on the front page, we did what if the applications will be denied, period.
Yeah, we had a few of those last year.
They run a business. They...
We have a couple of properties that are running businesses, like they cares out of churches.
So, is that based on...
We did not get them all cleaned up last year. Let's just put it that way.
But if you have a church camp that is making 80% of their income from non-secular use, we've got that all dialed in because that's what they were talking about last year as well. We do have a lot of weddings. We have some parties and stuff here.
So, what we're asking for this year, instead of focusing on their income statements so much, we are focusing more on, we've asked for an event calendar. So, if they use the property for purposes for what they were organized for, religious whatever, for 200 days out of the year, I can break it down and assess them.
Oh, you're going to do it by time of year?
A portion of it, yeah. So, if they, if they qualify for the exemption for 200 days out of the year, then that's what they'll get the exemption on, but the other 165 days I would put them on the rolls for.
Yeah, I think that's...
With your direction, of course.
I think that's really important because if we ever get to the point where we take STRs and break that out and start taxing them for either income or days per year that house is rented out, I really think that's the answer.
It can be done. It's a lot of work, but it can be done, and it's the fairest, the most fairest way, I think, we can do this.
Well, and the applicant does a lot of that work.
Well, yes.
You have quite a bit to make sure it's true and accurate.
That was the devil's advocate.
Then you don't have to worry about...
No, you're just the devil.
Yes, I am. Some days. That's my role up here. I'm going to start wearing horns. What if, say, when they're doing this in April, they don't know yet, you know, what if they've even leased the place out? I mean, as a nonprofit, we've leased places out 60 days in advance, and they would not even have that knowledge yet at that timeframe.
We're looking at calendar year 2023.
Stuff that's already happened.
So, in the back.
Basically, it's January 1 to January 1.
Hopefully, therefore, they've kept pretty good track of exactly everybody. Okay.
And they did...
And how do we confirm that? They didn't put somebody on their calendar, then...
We've had, from the, for the three years that I've been here, we've had applications that come in that basically just say, "We use our property exclusively for religious purpose." That's it. And there's no, there's no validation of that.
Well, you can show that on their income statement, though.
That's why we ask for income statements. That's why we ask for some of this supporting documentation to verify that those, those statements are true. And some of the adjustments that we made in the way we asked the questions and the way it was worded was to elicit more information than just yes or no.
You're going to back it up with an income statement.
That's how we kind of...
That was our supporting documentation of your claim that you were using this property for a religious purpose exclusively. And one thing I want you to think about between now and the time you are confronted with your first application is, if you want to stay with the religious theme, but the same concept applies to charitable exemption. If, if, if you belong to a church and you own a church camp, and your, your church hosts a two-week retreat on your church camp where you are talking about the tenants of your religion, you are certainly, you are certainly fulfilling the purpose of your, of your, of your religion by doing that. But when you rent it to another church, talk about the tenants of their religion...
Oh, wow.
How are you furthering the purpose, your religious purpose?
So, it's not just a religious purchase. It is, or purpose, it is...
That's, that is the question I'm asking you to...
That's a damn good question.
To think about because I've seen some counties interpret it that narrowly and make the, and make a very plausible argument that if you are renting it, even if you're renting it to a different religion, you are not furthering your religious purpose because the tenants of your religion are different than, are different than, than, than that church's religion.
Wow.
So... So, you, that's, that's, you get to make that decision. You get to decide what policy you want to...
We don't want to make that decision.
I understand.
You said that like it was a gift.
But if you do like the Boy Scout camp, if they would lease out that camp to any other group that's not Boy Scouts, they'd blow their exemption for that week, for that time.
Correct.
See, like, we rented Quaker Hill for the youth camp here three weeks ago, and it's us and two other churches rented Quaker Hill Church Camp. It's a facility. It's big enough for the kids. You know, it's considered a church camp. And so, how would you look at it?
So, did you guys write that down? You just have direct evidence of how...
I wouldn't want to go there. I don't want to go there. That's...
Well, we were at Alpha Lane and...
There is...
We always rented to Catholics and Mormons.
If you, if you talk to other county commissioners that are, can have church camps like we have here, you'll see a sliding scale in the way that they are interpreting that, which is frustrating. That, that is, the frustration is that the legislature has given us a pretty tricky set of statutes to deal with. They're not, they're not black and white, which means that it puts the pressure back on you to make those determinations and, and set those policies. We just had a BTA decision in 2022. This is a Custer County BTA case where they had chapel that was being rented out to three other churches. And, and what the BTA decided was what I just parroted back to you, which is, you're not furthering the owner's church, the owner of that chapel was not furthering their own religious tenants by renting it out to these other three churches to hold church services in their, in their chapel. It was, in the BTA's mind, a rental property, a commercial rental property.
Did they charge for that service?
They did.
So, I would assume if they didn't charge, I would have a different issue versus if they charged.
Quite possibly, but they were charging a fee.
I can imagine not charging because you've got to have all the cleanup costs and everything else, you know, that you've got to maintain the property, but that's... So, the BTA, so, if the, if Custer County disagreed with that, they could take that to the Idaho Supreme Court for clarification?
Yep.
But nothing's gotten to that one with the Supreme Court for clarity.
Not, not yet.
Is anything coming up within, like, the Assessors Association to try and clarify language in this statute?
No, they're focused on the 602D, the hospitals. That's all that is being addressed.
And you're probably hearing what's going on with the hospitals and delineating whether the physician's offices and where they have, you know, I guess they're connected to a hospital in some way because the doctors that, that occupy these, these office, this office space where they see patients, but, but some counties, I think Ada in particular, is saying that's, that is not a hospital property and should be taxed accordingly.
Ryan, I got a favor to ask you because I'm getting jammed not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow. St. Luke's from McCall wants to meet with me and discuss this very issue here in this room. Would you be willing to attend? I know that Commissioner, what's his name? Like again, who's it? Rod Beck wants me to record it.
Wants you to what?
Record the conversation.
Oh.
And I'm thinking, eh, I don't know if I'm getting myself into a jam here or not.
So, long as the purpose of the meeting isn't to discuss an, an application that's pending. Ada County's running some legislation, so I would assume that the, the purpose of the meeting is they want to talk to you about the legislation.
Well, what started it was St. Luke's put an article in the paper saying that they pay taxes on some of that property.
Right.
And I went to Sue, and she looked it up, and they don't pay any taxes on any of it. And I said, "That's not correct."
Right. So, St. Luke historically has been, I think, pretty honest. They, so, this last year, I can speak to that, they said, "We are applying for exempt status on these 10 parcels. However, these two that have been exempted the previous year are not exempt anymore because basically they're renting..."
And didn't they have a bear lot, too?
They're, I think there's two bear lots, but you guys granted the exemption on the bear lots. So, the only two that they did not get the exemption on are the two that they said that were being rented out to hospital staff. In other words, they're charging rent for those houses.
For people to live there.
Right. So, those are the two that...
Providers, right.
They are paying taxes on because they didn't apply for an exemption on those two properties. Everything that they applied for an exemption on, they were granted the exemption and are not paying taxes on the ones they applied.
And that's based on the hospital code right now. Is that correct?
Nonprofit hospital.
Nonprofit, yeah.
And that's where the rub really kind of lies. I guess what I would ask is maybe both of you be there next Tuesday at 3:30 in this room, just to be there to keep me from going to jail or saying something that...
Is that really, I mean...
Let's think about that. Let me...
They have really pushed back with you on, I mean, that might be...
Violation. Because we're in application season, it's tricky, you know? Entertaining meetings with, with property owners that could potentially...
Well, the issues, I kept putting them off, Ryan. I said, "No, I don't, I don't really want to do this." I delayed it. It started about January, first part of January. And they keep hammering me, "We need to do this. We need..."
They're fishing.
Three of them coming. It's like, oh, what am I getting myself into here?
I'm glad you're taking that, maybe.
They're, they're doing fishing out. They're doing fishing.
But if I could say, "You know what? Depending on where the conversation goes, I can't talk to you anymore." That would be awesome. We'll talk about it. I'll get with you this week.
I can't help you with that. That's, that's part of how I advise you as a, as a board member. We'll see how.
Well, and I, I would like to have some warriors behind me or beside me on this kind of a deal.
And, and I don't want to get into...
They're listening to you.
Any potential application, any pending application that we'll be considering in the future for calendar year 2023. If the purpose of their discussion is Ada County's, we're going to be running some legislation. They want to talk to you about what their position is.
We can talk about that.
That's, that's...
Well, it's like everything in this job. You take it head-on and deal with it.
So, so, I kind of threw out the, the question for you guys to be considering between now and April 15th, when we get these applications in, on how, how strictly you want to interpret and apply these statutes. You still have to be within, I mean, there's, what I'm saying is there's room within the statute to interpret it certain ways. So, we'll be, we'll be asking you to make those interpretations, those policy statements, and then apply them to the applications when they, when they come in. To give you some context on how the statutes are written, the legislature has gone to great lengths in these statutes to say that the burden of proof, the evidence that needs to be presented in order for you to qualify for the application is on, is, the burden is on the applicant. So, it's not Sue's job or Christie's job to go out and find the information to make them qualify. It's their job, and they, they need to demonstrate that they have enough information to satisfy all of your questions because your direction is to strictly interpret these exemptions because they're not favored. They're, in fact, the opposite. They're disfavored because, as you would expect, if you're not paying property taxes, you have a competitive advantage in the marketplace for those that are... And, and as we have seen over the last several years, there is the tendency that these properties that are exempt are getting commercial creep into their, into their operations, their business plans, where whether you're a religious property or a charitable property, maybe, maybe it's taking on the, the character more of a commercial operation than, than, than it was for the, for the original purpose. So, you are supposed to interpret it strictly against, against the application. So, it's, it's supposed to be hard to qualify.
Sorry, latitude. I'm sitting here thinking to myself, and the reason I think that this needs to be an active conversation with the legislature to tighten this up is, so, Boy Scout camp, they lease it out to a lot of other people, and we say no. And maybe the Boy Scout camp has another unit down in Boise County and Ada County and Owyhee County, and they all interpret it differently. So, all of a sudden, now we're not, they're not being treated equally under the state codes. And so, my concern is, is, you know, especially hospitals. I mean, they're in every single county. Each one of us interpreted differently. There is no continuity throughout the system, and therefore, the chance for litigation is increasing. I mean, is that a takings on, in some we have, maybe it's not a takings or something else, you know? So, I think the state code itself should be clear and concise so that individual counties are not interpreting state code and state law differently.
Well, as, so, you, you've really teed it up to, to illustrate what the problem is with the property tax exempt code. If Boise County is interpreting the, the same statute that we are and very similar or same set of circumstances with a different outcome, then the logical recourse to that is to go to the legislature and say, "We got approved in Boise County. We got denied in Valley County." The legislature needs to clarify how this needs to go. And that, that's actually a pretty good outcome. That, that will help us better understand what the expectations are from the, from the legislature that writes the rules for these kind of things. And I think our job, our job as they, as it is right now, is to make sure that we aren't making arbitrary decisions. You do that by making sure that your decisions are supported by evidence. Okay? So, when the applicant comes in, I just told you the burden's on them to provide you with the evidence to support it. You can read through that application, read through the materials that they provide. You should be able to ask yourself, "Is this an exempt property?" And be able to answer yes, if you're going to vote yes, without any question at all. If you have, if it's more of a maybe, statute's pretty clear. If you are not convinced that they qualify, then the answer is no. And the statute's very clear. And, and so, you shouldn't be afraid. Now, people are going to appeal because they don't like the decision.
They've never been held accountable. I mean, this is really new for Valley County at any rate to really hold people accountable to this, but...
Well, and I think the other issue, like your comment about Boise County, Valley County, Boise County has an assessor that's going to go in there and say, "Well, wait a minute. You guys are doing this wrong." And hopefully, they're educated enough to, that you guys are going to come out on the same side of the fence.
We would hope. I mean, we haven't held...
That would be challenging.
We had a change in leadership, you know, and Sue's done... I mean, we haven't held, we had a change in leadership, you know, and Sue's done a great job, kudos to you, and a change in prosecuting attorney to make this happen under the old way of doing business, I don't know.
I have to tell you, they're, all the assessors, and this was from our assessor meeting, uh, in September, that they're all kind of looking for somebody, they're like, we don't know what to do. And so I actually spoke, uh, about what Valley County was doing and, and, you know, how and why. And, and so there was a lot of people that had questions. I answered, you know, for what I know, for what I knew. Um, I think there's, I think the body as a whole isn't willing to dive in quite as deep as we have just yet. Um, I think it is, and, and Valley County has a lot of exempted properties compared to the other counties.
How many church camps do we have anyway? Around ninety?
Hundred and twenty-six.
Hundred and twenty-six church camps?
And I think a couple of them sold, I know the, like the Mormon church behind the often cemetery, it's sold to a private individual.
No, that went to the Catholic church.
Yeah.
No?
It did, it went to the Catholic.
Not what I'm hearing from the neighbors.
So the Mormons. Sold family that's.
So there's two parcels up there and the Catholics bought both, but one of them is exempt, which I'm not certain it should be. I don't even know if they have an active camp going on. I know there's buildings there, I know, I've heard through the Catholic church that they're, they need a lot of work, so I don't even know if they had camp.
We did, Craig and I saw something that
Are they working on it?
Something, no, they had some people there.
Oh, like, like camp? Oh, okay.
Then they have a Camp there for years, so I mean, it's fully functioning, they don't have to.
Then they have a parcel next to it that's bare land that was receiving the timber exemption when they bought it. And so of course I sent a new timber packet out to the new owners, meaning the Catholics. And they did a management plan, so that parcel is on the rolls under a timber exemption. And then the one next to it over here with the buildings and what have you, um, is tax exempt.
Anyway, one time I remember we got a hundred and twenty-six, but that was
I don't know the numbers, I didn't.
No, we don't have that many anymore.
I don't see it.
You should have them.
To, uh, like, you know, you hear it all the time, St. Luke's, St. Owls. And you hear they made six billion this year. And you're sitting there, how are they?
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Are they tax exempt? Yeah, put it back into new buildings and personnel and you just, you make all the money in the world you want, you just, you have to reinvest it in the organization.
Well, according to the IRS rules, a nonprofit corporation can lose a lot of money or they can make a lot of money. So long as they're meeting the requirements to qualify as a nonprofit corporation, um, they, they meet that requirement. So the amount, the amount of money can be deceiving, but what, uh, what we need to focus on is if five oh one C three designation from the IRS is a requirement, do they have that letter from the IRS in the file? They do, we check that box and then we move on to the next one. Sue kind of hinted around it with her example with these, with the Catholic church camp that, that she's questioning whether or not they should qualify. And that is, are they using it? Uh, so idle lands, bare lots, uh, are, are they actively using it for the exempt purpose? That's another question that I want you to think about when you, between now and the time you get some applications coming in front of you, because you'll see, you'll see applications that have multiple parcels and some of them are going to be very clear. Yep, we're using it, this is what we're doing on it. And this one over here, we just bought it and it's just kind of sitting there because we're going to do something with it in the future. You look at the, you look at the words in the statute, it says you have to be using the property exclusively for the purpose in which you are, you're either charitable or religious or, or a school. Um, those parcels qualify. So there's a lot of nuances. Um, that's why Sue and I and Christie invest a lot of time to try and help you work through some of those, some of those questions, but, uh, you, and they're tough questions to answer. There, there's, there's, there's not an easy answer, um, and kind of on a sliding scale. So you'll be confronted with those questions coming up as well.
Well, but I think, you know, that's part of, when I'm deciding is, you know what? It's kind of a gray area, I don't know, so I'm probably going to turn them down and I'm going to go, let them go to BTA and let the state make that.
Sure.
That's going to tell me what I'm going to do the next time.
And we, and we had a couple of those last year. There's the church down in Smith's Ferry
Right.
That boarded up most of the time, but they were using it from time to time. And there was some questions about, you know, or i- is it, does it qualify or does it not? I think we approved some and, and disapproved others just because of lack of information. And who knows what you're going to get, get this year. Another thing too, um, ownership is important, so what you should have in your application is some deed or some information that shows that the charitable or religious corporation that is applying actually owns the parcel. So you, you're going to want to look for that as well.
And can you do that on our GIS? Can you find that pretty easy on a map? Because a lot of times there's some ABC corporation somewhere in the world and we don't know who that is.
We always verify with the deed. Just in case that got incorrectly inputted onto your GIS map.
Well, that two hundred days you were talking about, if they haven't used it for two hundred days.
That was just an example.
Just example.
I, I was just using round numbers.
Sure.
So if, if, let's say they, uh, submit a calendar of events and it shows that a hundred and sixty-five days, uh, they rented it out to another church, another organization, retreats, reunion, whatever, then those one hundred and sixty, what I'll do is I'll break the value down by the day and then assess them for a hundred and sixty-five days that they didn't use it for religious purposes, for what, for whichever they were organized for.
Even if they rented it out to another religious organization?
Right, that's what, um, Oki was explaining, that when they rent it out to a different religious organization, it, it's not
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
Their religious
I guess, how to interpret that, yeah.
That sounds like that went to the BTA last year though, and the church lost.
Mm-hmm.
The Board of, uh, Taxation at the state came back and said it's different religions, doesn't serve your religious purpose.
Wow.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's a big dang deal.
Kind of sets a precedence.
Oh, yeah.
I ain't going to get the Christians mad at you.
Hey, oh, a quick question, chapter thirty, title thirty of Idaho Code. Does that give details of what a nonprofit has? Because it's down the bottom of the statute.
Are you looking, oh, that's the, you're looking at the hospital exemption?
Yeah.
Yeah, El, that is, uh, that's specific to hospitals and the reference, the reference there will take you directly to a definition of what a hospital property is. So that's, that is an important section of Idaho Code, um, which outlines what is an, what is and is not a hospital. Title thirty.
So that's title sixty-three, chapter thirty, ti- I don't know, where do I find that? Here in one of these, is that one?
Don't look there, because those are outdated.
Okay.
Uh, if you go to Idaho, go to the online version of Idaho Code on your iPad.
Okay.
Type in the
Chapter, title thirty, chapter thirty.
Title thirty, chapter thirty, it'll take you right to the definition. The online version of Idaho Code is the most up to date. Those books, those books over there have not been updated in years, so.
Need to go down to your office. That would be crazy.
They need to go to the museum we're going to build.
Yeah.
I stole, I stole Doug's copy and updated them. Uh, maybe we, we probably should take those and, and get them updated so we've got updated versions, but, but the
I would ever go there, but.
The, the paper, the, these paper books, I, I don't know, that's the, the most recent version, which will reflect the changes that were made in this year's legislative session. Those are the, that's, that's the version of Idaho Code that you want to be looking at. It's free, it's online, you can search it, uh, so use that as your, as your
Where we, where, and Rod Beck and I talked about it a great deal, it's about the clinics, the offshoot clinics from a hospital. Let's just take the calls because I know the area, if you have a orthopedic surgeon doing, uh, do they rent that facility from the hospital? Is that a business income then to the hospital or does they, don't you have to define all the revenue, where that money goes from that particular building?
Well, um, as, as I think you'll find out when you dig into these kind of things, there's a lot of complex, uh, ownership structures for any kind of a business plaza and which may include hospitals. Hospitals don't always own the building that they occupy. Sometimes the, the hospital and the land is owned by a commercial venture that's just looking at, that's a secure, that is a secure source of rental income. They will take the risk, build the hospital and hope that a, a hospital corporation will rent the space from them. So you do have to dig into that. So there's no right, there's no black and white, yes or no answer to that question. The, the answer is it really depends on who owns the property, how's the property being used, does it meet all the criteria for the definition of a hospital? And, and I think that's what Ada is trying to clarify with the legislation is, let's make this a little easier to, to make it a little more black and white than what it currently is.
Well, it's great to sit down and talk to Rod because some of their issues down there are huge.
Yeah.
Parking lots for a hospital, you know, all that kind of stuff. But if you have a clinic that only performs nasal surgery or shoulder surgery, they can't, they don't have an ER room, they can't save people's lives, is that the definition of a hospital?
Right. And that's where
So gray and
And that's so, and, and I think, if I understand, I, I think what the position that Ada's taking is that these clinics do not meet the definition of a hospital, according to that title thirty, chapter thirty definition.
I'm going to read that.
Because they're, they're looking more and more like commercial office space that's rented by doctors, even though they provide a dispensive medical advice in these buildings. Their, their ownership is different, they're not necessarily connected, physically connected to the hospital itself. Um, and so that's the, that's, that's the battle that's brewing there.
And I remember reading somewhere years ago about the definition of a hospital had to be open twenty-four hours a day, enabled it seven days a week. Well, all of those places, a lot of those clinics shut down at end of the day. And it's like
Miss you a minute.
Well, there, and there's a, there's a big case that's pending in front of the Supreme Court, they have not argued their case yet. But, um, and, and I tell you the story only from the standpoint of, um, o- over approving applications can come back and bite you too. And that's what happened in Pocatello and Vanette County. Um, I'll give you the ten thousand foot view of what the per, the issue with the case is. Um, like I just described, a developer, uh, a, a developer who's not a hospital, just a developer, buys land, builds buildings, um, built, built a hospital and then entered into a contract with the hospital that was renting the space from them for a, a right of first refusal to expand the hospital. And I'm assuming there was offices and all sorts of stuff associated with that. And for whatever reason, the Vanette County decided to go with a different contractor. So not only did they sue them for breach of contract because they had a contractual right of first refusal, they also, they also, uh, sued the county for approving the tax exemption on that property that was built by this other contractor, when in fact it should have never been approved.
And so this legislation, technically, the way that Rod told me to start with, was only to clarify the fact that county, Board of County Commissioners got to have an approval or denial on these applications. All of this is supposed to already be being looked at, um, but not come to the BLCC for approval, it goes directly to the state. So is the state doing their job in making sure that the hospitals are doing all of this work? And what, what Ada County's concern is, is they have never been held accountable to the statute. And we want to be back into the middle of that conversation so we can hold them accountable to the statute. I don't think the statute's changing all that much. It's current law, it just hasn't been, uh, implemented to the
It's been interpreted wildly different depending on which county you're in. And sometime when you get a changeover in the assessor's office or here, in my position, obviously. Uh, and, and that's some frustration. I've heard that frustration in our county, that it's like we've, we've kind of gotten accustomed to being approved for this without a whole lot of pushback. Now, now, now things have changed. We haven't changed, but you guys have changed and, and I, and I do get that. I understand that frustration, but the, the legislature, for whatever reason, decided that they have to reapply year after year after year. You don't get this approved one time and then you're, you're granted, you're granted exempt status into perpetuity. So, a- and I think that's an acknowledgement that business practices do change on these properties from year to year and that the interpretation of these statutes could necessarily change as well. So, uh, so there should be no expectation that if you were granted the, the year prior, that you would be entitled to an exempt approval again. You have to, you have to reapply, you have to demonstrate once again that you qualify and that you meet all the elements. So the challenge that, that you have is make sure you understand the statute, all the elements that are there, read the application packet that's put in front of you and, and then make sure that they meet all of those requirements and be thinking about some of the nuances that we've talked about here today. I'm really grateful, I'm, I'm thankful we've got the opportunity to have a workshop like this so we can talk about this, how, you know, is idle land actually being used for an exempt purpose, for a charitable purpose? A- and if so, how? How are you using a bare piece of ground to further the charity that you are organized for?
It's contiguous, Brian, and it has walking trails on it. They say, you know, the walking trails are being used by our students.
I would argue that's not idle. That is actually actively being used and, and, and sure, I think that that is a, that depending on, depending on the purpose of, you know, if the, i- if it's, uh, i- if it's a school as an example, and one of the tenants of the school, as it's outlined in their articles of incorporation in their bylaws, is that we're an outdoor school and we like to, uh, we like to promote outdoor activities and teach the kids about science in, in open environment. Well, it, that's outlined right there in their bylaws, they're using it consistent with the bylaws. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think twice about
They keep adding
The outdoors last year.
If they, well, if they keep adding ground and adding ground and adding ground, I mean, just a trail across it is going to make it
Yeah, I think you need to ask, you know, questions like that. I mean, is that, is it really for that purpose or, or are you, are you buying this land for, for a different purpose? And, and it's, it's certainly appropriate to interact with them that way and maybe push back on an answer that you might find suspicious or, uh, maybe not complete.
Yep. Kind of interesting on number seven on the back page, it just talks about hospitals with more than, what was it, a hundred and fifty rooms? Have to give us a report every, by the end of the year, each year. Didn't know that.
That's a big, that's a big hospital.
I don't think they're giving it to us now.
They don't have a hundred and fifty
They don't have a hundred and fifty rooms. How, I wonder how many rooms St. Luke's has now, I don't know.
That'll be one of the questions we'll have to ask.
I don't think we're up to like twenty rooms.
But does it say to go to the county commissioners or does it?
To the board.
Interesting.
Then there's another part in here, talks about, um, oh, shoot, where'd it go? Donated time, funds, subsidies and equipment indication process to determine general community needs that also have to go to the board. Report, report shall itemize a hospital's amount of unreimbursed services for the Report, the report shall itemize the hospital's amount of unreimbursed services for the prior year. Which I'm assuming you're taking that now. Well, you just automatically renew it every, we haven't looked at them, have we? Huh, this is gonna be a few more days a week.
As far as the land goes too, one of our biggies with churches and real hospital, they're lots that they say are used for snow stor- you know, restoring our snow and stuff. So that's another thing you guys have to consider.
Where did I just read that?
Those are making our jobs a lot harder.
That's under number three.
Yeah, cause we come across that and I was like-
You guys just do a rubber stamp it when it comes up.
Do not ever give him a rubber stamp it, whatever you do.
Agreed.
Well, I'm assuming we're probably gonna have to have a lot more BOE days. I don't know, I mean, the way there's- Not many of the BOE, but more days to look at these.
Well, that's why we got the application out on our website. And then she sent a letter out to everybody that was receiving an exemption to let them know, hey, we are accepting applications. The sooner you get them in, the sooner we can take them before you guys and you can make a decision on those.
Instead of waiting till-
And they don't need to be here for that? They can be, but they don't need to be.
They can be, it'll be in the commissioner meeting.
Not really any reason for them to be here unless we-
Not really, I mean, they've submitted-
Unless we contested it.
Right.
Right, I, if you were to deny it, uh, for whatever reason, or appertion it and they didn't agree with the appertionment, you know, they can file an appeal by the-
Or we could do another work session before we get to that endpoint.
I'd be here if I was trying to convince somebody to waive my taxes.
We haven't really visited about how we wanna handle that.
The appertionment?
No, the, um, like, so let's say we hear one tomorrow, uh, they deny it. We send them and deny a letter saying you've been denied for whatever reason. And then they say, well, we wanna appeal that. Technically, they have until the fourth Monday in June.
Right.
Or they could come in and say, can we meet and try and work through the issues?
That's, that's the one, I don't know how we wanna handle that.
If you want to, to try to negotiate.
Right, if they wanna come in and try to maybe provide more information for them?
Uh, not in front of the board, but certainly with the assessor's office, that could, that could occur.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
So-
You mean they forgot to put something in or forgot, yeah.
Your, the, the Board of Equalization is, you'll, you'll hear me or Arnie say this a lot to you. You, you, as county commissioners, you wear two hats. One is the legislative and policymaking hat, which is when you promulgate ordinances or you establish policies. The other hat is your quasi, quasi judicial hat. Basically, you're, you, you don't get to be called a full judge, you get to be called a quasi judge.
Quasi judge.
When you're judging, when you're judging, judging an application, just like a defendant in a criminal case shouldn't be back meeting with the judge, talking about his case or her case. You, you have to kind of wall, wall that off.
Maybe that time, sure, you can wear your hat with the horns on it.
Yes, I will. I was just saying, we get to look like judges, I'm wearing a robe next time.
With the wig? Do we get the white wigs?
That's it, where's HR?
And I, I ta- you know, I, I kinda painted it and I painted the picture like that just to kind of help you as a reminder, when you get requests for meetings, you, you need to think about that. Am I, am I, am I sitting in a-
Well, I have thought about it, cause I know I'm, I'm biasing myself.
If I'm a quasi judicial capacity, should I be entertaining this meeting? Should I be having these conversations? Uh, or, or is it in the, in the policymaking realm?
Maybe what I should do is delay it until after BOE.
And that's why I said with St. Luke's, if-
Delay it until after.
If what they wanna talk to you about is the fact that there's some issues down in Ada County and some potential legislation that might be coming, that is policymaking side discretionary. Those are the kind of meetings that it's appropriate for you to have those discussions with them about listening to what their concerns are with the way Ada County's interpreting or implementing this, this policy or, or what they see in legislation that could be harmful to them, that they want to, they wanna lobby you basically.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
And, and, you know, that's part of your job as a commissioner is you get to be lobbied from time to time. Where you have to cut it off is when you are considering a specific application.
If we're the judge, we don't talk about it.
If you're the judge, you can't talk about it.
We're not the judge.
And it doesn't matter if it's a property tax application or a CUP application in planning and zoning.
Right.
Same rules apply. That's a specific case that, that you need to take, no, can't.
And you can't take a, you can't take an envelope from them. No, I will never do that real time. I like to sleep at night, but, you know, like when I talked to Rod about it, I said, you know, even if there was a compromise and we just did, just taxed personal property, hospitals, I think would be a fair way to kind of spread that. Cause, you know, there's a kind of a feeling that, oh, it's a hospital, we want them, we wanna take care of them, we wanna be profitable cause we need them. But there's also people on the other end of that spectrum that are very low income senior citizens that can't afford to pay their taxes because you got this big giant subsidy.
Not only that, but there are for-profit hospitals now. So we're giving subsidies to nonprofit hospitals and the for-profits are going out of business because they can't compete.
And the county hospitals same way.
And remember too, that Bannock County may have fallen for that trap as well, where maybe they didn't look into who, who owns the property, who owns the parcel. That's step one in your whole analysis is who owns it? Is it, is it actually the hospital that owns it? Or is it a developer, a, a, a commercial developer that owns it, so?
So a commercial developer that leases it to a hospital should be paying taxes on that?
Correct.
Whole value.
That is a rental property.
Wow, think of those taxes.
It amounted to about three hundred thousand dollars per year, according to the court case, or the briefs that I read.
Is that each in your bottom line, doesn't it? Okay, anything else you guys wanna talk about?
Well, you've got the, you know what the application is, you know what the codes are now. Maybe keep those packets handy, cause you wanna refer to them as you hear the different applications come through. We're gonna talk about denials and appertionment, I guess we kinda have.
We can, we can talk about appartement. The, um, there's, there's pretty clear s- set of standards or rules in place for apportioning a building. That's, I mean, that's easy, you know? It's, there's, there's a case out of Payette County from quite a few years ago where, you know, you, you took the square footage of the office space, half of it was rented to another organization. And so you split it down, split it down the middle and you apportioned it fifty fifty and you applied the application, the appartement based on square footage of the, of the, uh, property itself. We don't, we don't have very many properties like that. In fact, I can't remember that we have any. What we do have is, the example that I have used time and time again is that you have a, a charitable corporation that has a camp and they rent it out, they rent it out for a commercial purpose. It's retreats, office retreats or, uh, fraternities, rent it for the weekend or whatever. There is, there is a, a tax commission rule that basically says you can apportion on the, uh, calendar year, I guess. That's, again, it's not that clear, but, uh, we, we could consider that. And that is the assessor's motivation to get that event calendar. So we can look at a twelve month, a twelve month calendar year and see how many of those months did you use it exclusively for your charitable purpose? And how many of those months were you using it for a commercial purpose? And then apportion the property according to the event calendar.
Should you do it on?
That would be a little, that would be a, an upgrade in the way that we've done it in the prior years.
So how's that work when you have, say, Quaker Hill, nonprofit organization, is renting out to another nonprofit organization? We still looking at Quaker Hill, we're not looking at other people at all, right?
So, yes. You're looking at the owner, it, it is the owner's use of the property.
So, like over there at the old SO office where you got nonprofit renting part of that building, other part is for whatever other offices. That building be, gonna be looked at as apportioned because of different rental? Old SO office on Idaho Street? Not sure what street that is, Fourth Street? I don't know who owns the building. It was the original old, uh, Forest Service office. I don't know who owns the actual structure anymore.
That's, that's really step one.
That's in the city of McCall though, so it's not-
We, no, we, we are, we are reviewing- We are reviewing-
Federal government owns supervisor's office and are renting it out for a commercial, you can't send the federal government a bill.
So that's a six oh two A exemption. Uh, one of the, so government property is, is exempt under six oh two A. That's one of the, one of the exemptions that is not required to, to actually even submit an application. So if it, if it's owned by, if it's owned by the state, uh, municipal organization or, or the federal government, they don't pay property taxes on that parcel. So, back to the appartement, you look at who owns the parcel? How's that parcel being used? Is it being used in furtherance of the owner's exempt purpose, whether it's religious or charitable? And if, and if the answer to that question is sometimes yes and sometimes no, then we have to answer the appartement question. How, how are we gonna appartement?
Can you still use the income part?
I think that's how you have to back up the calendar, cause I could just see a bunch of people going, yeah, it's not on the calendar or whatever. Think if they've got income reported on their taxes, you gotta somehow show where that came from, it's not on the calendar.
So you see, in the St. Luke's application, historically, they've said, housing that we provide for staff at our hospital that we charge rent, we are not even going to apply or ask for that exemption because I think they've probably maybe bent rounds with another county where they said that's, that's not, it's not a hospital use, that is a, that's a rental property.
So what about in the situation last year, St. Luke's bought five acres within the city limits of McCall? Sewer's not to it yet, they're waiting for upgrades. So, I mean, they, they are going to put employee housing on it, it's still not a hospital, so they still can't.
And that's under number three, if you look at bare land is-
So there is a, there's a provision in the hospital exemption that is unique to hospitals only. And that's just because they've got a really good lobby, uh, that says that it, if it is under construction, then it is exempt. If it is, if it's under construction and it, and is expected to become hospital property during that interim period when it is under construction, uh, it actually qualifies. You're not gonna find that in the charitable or the religious exemptions.
I go home and read these.
Yeah.
Yeah, read, read those.
One, if not twice.
Job gets bigger every year, I swear.
Yeah, this, this is- This is a tough one. The legislature didn't do us any favors with this.
Every year it gets more hours, more days a week. Thanks.
So, quick, just one more quick question for you guys. Uh, after we receive it back from the prosecuting attorney's office and I asked to be put on the agenda so you guys can hear them along the way, do you want me to, uh, basically scan their application? If it, like, if it's in person submitted or through the mail, I can scan it and then email it to you guys? We can, uh, I can do it by parcel number, I think would probably be the most-
Get it to Doug's office and put it in the packet? Then we get our entire day in one, instead of individual emails where we're trying to-
You're talking about BOE or just during?
No, just to hear them along the way, cause it, it's going to start here pretty quick. As soon as I start getting, uh, feedback from the prosecutor's office, I'm gonna try to get those on the agenda so you don't have so many to do all at once.
Well, and even for BOE, I think like, feel like if you, that person's come in and talked to their appraiser and they've adjusted the value, they've agreed on it, cause you have to bring all those forward to us as well. It's like, you guys have agreed to that, that I'm okay with that.
It's a, it's a, that's a timing issue in Idaho code. You have to, they have to have, okay, if we make an adjustment to their value in the month of June, cause they call in and there's something wrong and an appraiser makes an adjustment, we ask Dee Dee to send them an amended notice. But they still have to have ten days to appeal that amended value. So what, how, I have to count backwards every year from July second Monday in July and they have to have ten days to be able to appeal that new value. So that is the cutoff, that determines what day the cutoff is where we can't send out basically amended notices anymore. We have to have you guys approve them. So that's a little bit separate, uh, subject? Does that make sense?
That's why we get so many appraiser approved.
That's, so the appraiser requests are because of statutory time limits and what we have to allow the property owner.
We have to do those one at a time or can we do like a whole bunch?
That's true, we did a bunch of them at once.
I mean, it-
No, actually, I think June told us, we had to do each one at, each one.
You really, you really have to do each one and say-
Can we speed this up?
Right. I don't know where we're gonna land this year, I haven't got that far yet, uh, on that subject. But that's, that has to do with amended notices, timeframes, et- et cetera.
That's why we get those. Okay?
Yeah.
And that's how we have to do it, that's how we have to do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go figure it out and report to you, um, on Monday of what day that cutoff will be. This year, I believe we got lucky and there was enough days that we didn't have to do any appraiser requests. But that's the first time in several years.
What is the second Monday in July? Eighth, July eighth. Really, you don't have to bring them to us unless they appeal it? Is that the way you're looking at it?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
You don't really have to bring them to us unless they actually appeal your decision.
Which subject are we talking about, the?
About appraisal.
About the appraisal, if the appraiser makes an adjustment, cause it's warranted? And if-
And they don't, and they don't contest it?
Correct. We still have to give them ten days to appeal that new value. So what we'll do is we basically do what we call an appraiser appeal request. In other words, you guys authorize the appraiser what they did to fix that property record and the new value associated with it. And then at that point, because we treat it as an appeal, they still have appeal rights to be able to go to the BTA if they so choose.
Okay.
I know it's kind of-
You guys use acronyms, BTA is BOE.
Board of Tax Appeals, which is the, so it's Board of Equalization is at the county level. And then they have to file a BOE to be able to move to the BTA. So in other words, the BTA, Board of Tax Appeals, is at the state level?
State level, yeah.
And then on to district court to pass that if they wanted to.
I guess last thing for me is the ethics and government requirements apply to these applications as well. Don't forget your conflict of interest, uh, ex parte rules. A little different for this than it is for planning and zoning stuff, but, but the general concept's still the same. If you have an application for the church that you attend, probably should refuse yourself from that.
Church where?
Or at the very least declare you've got a conflict of interest. We're good. You have any questions about that? I'll, I can help you with all of that. So you will all, you will all see applications with people that you know, churches that you attend, you know, stuff like that. So make sure you remember that.
Good to know. Thanks for your help, everybody. There's nothing else on the agenda, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Awesome. Thank you ladies.